Do is call forth Pastor Washington to lead us in the invocation tonight. You didn't bring anybody for pledge? He is a local pastor here with Simon Church. He's been in the community for a couple of years, so he's gonna help us out tonight. So if we please stand. Father God, in Jesus' name, we thank you for just an opportunity to come. Come together, Father God, and handle matters that may need to be addressed, concerns that may need to be addressed. Father God, before we even go forth in that, Father God, let us just give you thanks for life today. Life today, Father God, precious life, Father God, because somebody, somewhere, Father God, cannot share that same testimony of life today. For itself, for that, we give you thanks. Father God, we ask of you, open the hearts and minds of the people, Father God. We can all come together, Father God, in this meeting. Father God bless them, may your blessing announcement, Father God, let them lead in service community to the best of their ability to fulfill the desires that they have, that this community becomes better in all matters of some. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, I'll have, I'll lead us in a pledge just today. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, for all. All right, thank you. So we will go ahead and with our first item on the agenda is the citizens' comments. Are there any citizens' comments? Citizens' comments? Okay, um, yes, sir, can you please move forward, just state your name and address? Yes. And it's just because online, so they get you online.
My name is Betty Williams. I live in Waynesville. I live in Waynesville. One of the things I want to discuss is, I went to St. Robert Residential Section. I saw a sign up there that says, children playing. Underneath that sign was another sign that said, speed limit ten miles per hour. I wanted to get one of those signs in my community back there because I got kids in my community where I live at, they're disabled children. That means they can't move very fast. But I like to have that side out of the, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm gonna pick on somebody. I wish we could figure out a way to get the police out there to tell those school bus drivers over, out of school bus driver, five years, tell them to slow down, we got chickens out there playing. Now, hey, see, you trying to stop that school bus at twenty-five miles per hour. Next thing I want to talk about. I added still the city. I would promise a couple of things. One was fire. One was suicide system. Another was a higher telephone bill. I got all of those. But what I would promise, I didn't get was streetlights. I would like to get streetlights out there and bring with territory. We have so many misbehaviors for crying shame. Last thing, it's very important to me, I like to walk. When I was young, I used to run. But now, when I'm not young, I walk. But here's the problem I got. You can't walk in Waynesville, Missouri, you can't walk about without saying a title related, D E A D. I know that the street department had a lot of work to do, but I think it's important to remove a dead animal so that I don't contact what he got. My wife literally refused to walk in Waynesville because of dead animal. I'm not getting excited yet, because of dead animal. And again, I've been told every time, they got work to do. I understand they got to work to do, but wouldn't it be a pleasant, much more pleasant city that we extract dead animal? That's about all, right? Yep, that's about all, okay?
Okay, sir. We are addressing the issue with the buses. That's something that we have addressed quite some time. We gave a warning chief to the bus bar with the same issue, same concern. We will look at that, uh, you said a street sign that says ten miles an hour in the community, but that's something that we have to take to our committees. Children playing. With children playing.
We have those. Yeah, we have those. Those are in.
They just have the honor of having to get them all up there.
Yeah, we actually, we've had them maybe about a week. We ordered them, we do have the children playing signs here.
Okay.
And you've also been looking in about the streetlights, right?
Streetlights with leclerc poles and pole attachment agreement and payment, yeah.
That's the white light, isn't it?
Yeah.
Because some of the lights that we got in Waynesville, they all were car seat.
Car seat is expensive.
All right, so are there any other citizens' comments? All right, special guest presentations, tonight we have park board appointments. I was contacted that Ms. Haley would not be here, but Andrew is here. So we will start with the park board appointments and then we'll move on to planning and zoning, which also informed me that he wouldn't be able to be here tonight. So moving forth with the park board appointments, I'll entertain a motion to appoint to the park board Erica Haley. We have to do them separate.
Do we have to do a separate motion? I'd like to make a motion that we, do we need separates for park board and then planning and zoning?
Yeah, we're gonna have to do that one separate as well.
Every single one of them separate?
Yep.
I have to have a roll call through two.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a park board appointment for Erica Haley.
I'd like to second. So we got to make a motion from Mr. Davis, second was Mr. Rice, Madam Clerk, all road.
Councilman Conley. Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Okay, I would also entertain a motion.
I would also like to make a motion.
Okay.
To accept a park board appointment for Andrew Everly.
Motion made by Mr. Davis, second. Second by Mr. Conley. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, planning and zoning, we have Timothy Rivera. I entertain a motion to appoint Timothy Rivera to planning and zoning.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Okay, Mr., Mr. Bill.
I'll second.
And second by Councilman Davis, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, all appointments have been approved. Did we have any documents tonight for Mr. Everly? Do you, no?
Oh, the woman does.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll get that to you. All right, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda is item number five. Our board commissioners lays out reports with the park board. I don't see Ms. Watson here or park board represented. I will tell you that this last meeting, they had a switch in the park board president. Newly appointed president is Rachel Watson. And also, we have a couple proposed ordinances to vote on. The first proposed ordinance is to amend the terms for the park boards. It is HB twenty twenty-three dash one eight.
First reading, an ordinance amending chapter one fifty of the municipal code book relating to the length of term served by members of the Waynesville Park Board fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance amending chapter one fifty of the municipal code book relating to the length of term served by members of the Waynesville Park Board fixing an effective date.
I entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Davis, second by Mr. Rice, discussion? No discussion.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
We also have a proposed ordinance HB twenty twenty-three dash one nine. That is amending the dog leash requirements in Ruby Dew Park. I'll entertain a motion. I'll second. Motion by Mr. Hyatt, second by Mr. Davis. I got the head.
It was Rob, Rob.
Or was it Rob? Oh, second by Mr. Rice.
I need to read the ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm moving too fast.
First reading, an ordinance amending chapter one fifty of the municipal code book relating to leash requirements of pets in Ruby Dew and Laughlin Parks fixing an effective date. The second reading, an ordinance amending chapter one fifty of the municipal code book relating to leash requirements of pets in Ruby Dew and Laughlin Parks fixing an effective date.
All right, now, can I add a motion? Mr. Hyatt, second, Mr. Rice, discussion? No discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now we have our report, before we go to our report, I want to ask council first. I want to present Mr. Everly, his presentation for being appointed. So I'll be moving forward to present that to him. Can you move forward, please? One of the reasons I wanted to, I want to make sure that he was here, and this is, this is something that deserves a round of applause, is we're, we're now having, he graduated the same year as my son, and that means he's young. And, and to volunteer his services in our community on the park board. And he, he, he asked the call, he said, I want to be a part of it, I want to be a part of the team and learn what I need to learn to participate and contribute. I thought that was something special tonight. So this is, I wanted to make sure that we had him here and present this to him. But this is your, your, your appointment orders, and this is for your historical records. But we want to go ahead and take a picture and say, first of all, a round of applause for we gave some, some youth on our boards, all right? Thank you. Want to say anything?
Ten minutes.
We'll start with planning and zoning, Mr. Hyatt.
June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, Planning and Zoning Commission met. We had a call to order by Twyla Cordery at five thirty P M. Corum was present, approval of amendments by Twyla Cordery before the meeting management made nine for the approval. Mark Cordesini made the motion to approve the amendments. Motion was seconded by Abby Haasit. The motion was passed unanimously. It selected a new committee chair. Mark Cordesini made a motion to keep Twyla Cordley as the committee chairwoman. Jeremy Nichols seconded the motion. The motion passed unanimously. We had an open public hearing rezoning request. Public hearing was open at five thirty-one P M. for a rezoning request from R one single family residential to mixed use low for the property located at two oh one Benton Street, Waynesville, Missouri. Joe Castranakis, owner of the property, located in Benton Street, introduced himself. Twyla Cordery stated that you currently use lower area home, lower area of the home is just store supplies and that you will continue to use it for that. Mr. Castranakis stated, yes, currently the lower area of the home is a walkout basement type ground level and is being used as storage space for building supplies and materials for contracting business. Family lives in the upper level of the home. Eventually, they would like to finish both units. Twyla Cordley asked if the future will be, there will be plans to turn the bottom level into Airbnb long-term rental. Mr. Castranakis stated the property was, the good potential is an Airbnb, but didn't want to lock that in and any rezone for that use, for that use. Like to use multi-use so he could, if it could be a bit of everything. Mark Cordesini asked if fencing could be required. Mr. Castranakis stated would not be required. Fencing property is big enough to serve his purpose, efficient parking for five to six cars. Mr. Castranakis would like to separate utilities for billing purposes, but the top level build is the home and the bottom level build is business. Scott Owens made a motion to sit the rezoning request to the city council for final approval. Bob Hyatt seconded the motion, the motion passed unanimously. Next was a closed public hearing with no further comments from citizens of the commission board. Twyla Cordley called a public hearing at five thirty-seven P M. Open hearing rezoning request, a public hearing was opened at five thirty-eight P M. for a rezoning request from R one single family residential to R two multifamily residential for the property located at eight oh two historic route sixty-six west Waynesville. Marissa Beatty, property owner, would like to rezon in order to renovate the building in the back property to turn, turn it into a one bedroom, two bath, or two bedroom rental. Twyla Cordley asked, Cordery asked if there is a minimum lot size. Harman stated, yes, property could, would meet requirements. Jeremy Nichols made a motion to send a rezoning request to the city council for final approval. Scott Owens seconded, Bob Hyatt abstained, and all others in favor of motion passed. Closed public hearing with no further comments from citizens, our commission. Twyla Cordley closed public hearing at five forty-two P M. I'm not going to go through all this, but we had a review of a conditional use permit at one oh six Lincoln Avenue. Nathan Carmen stated that during the public hearing for conditional use permit one oh six Lincoln Lane, that there was stipulations made, and one being that chickens were kept inside pens. Mr. Carmen received multiple complaints and the, inadvertently, the conditional use was taken away by the city, or just taken away by the city. And we got to the preliminary plot of Pinnacle Park. Mark Rowden stated property is currently is owned R three, intends to build the same as Pinnacle, twenty-three bedroom, two and a half single family homes to be used as rentals. Commission reviewed the plot, Jeremiah Nichols made a motion to second the plot to city council for final approval. Abby Haasit seconded the motion, the motion passed unanimously. Final plot of Pinnacle Park, commission reviewed the plot, no changes were made from the preliminary plot to the final plot. Jeremiah Nichols made a motion to send the plot to city council for final approval. Scott Owens seconded the motion, the motion passed unanimously. Review draft of telecom tower ordinance, draft ordinance provided to commission for review. Mr. Doyle stated that this is just a draft and was received from the city attorney. Mr. Doyle would like to discuss any revisions to the commission and may have a meeting next, may have, may have at the next meeting. But no further business, the meeting was adjourned at six seventeen P M. Next meeting scheduled for July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three at five thirty P M.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. Are there any questions for planning and zoning?
Yeah, so the backs of the houses, for those that are going up to Sweetburg, the backs of the houses in the plats, is that the back of the houses along Sweetburg, just past Summit? Is that where it's at? So those existing houses there, the guy that lives on the corner, comes in here quite often, the Monze's residence and all of those, are all these houses being put in between them?
To be between, yeah, I think you're, I'm not sure where the individual you said, but it's between Summit Pass and that next house on that flat spot.
All right, it's a lot of houses we go into, Larry.
What? That's what I asked when there, there's four, there's gonna be four townhouses on each lot, and they're like twenty-four feet wide, fifteen hundred square feet. One question that came up was the amount of room from the Sweetburg Road to the front of the property, the setback, I guess it's called.
Well, the setbacks were kind of, because the backs of the houses aren't Sweetburg.
Okay, okay.
No, no, the front of the house empties in Sweetburg, yes.
Okay. See right here.
Okay.
That's Sweetburg, and there's the houses right on. I mean, there's just, there's four of them right here on the lot, and the lot's a hundred point five nine acres, and it's got four townhouses on it. I guess from what I understand, they're sixteen feet apart, is that setting right? And there's another, these are sixteen feet, so then they got, they're, they're twenty-four feet wide, and they're, it's a, they're two-story. And there's gonna be a sidewalk down through here, right? Is that correct? Circles around.
You talking to trail?
Trail, yeah. Is it sidewalk runs into the trail?
That's.
There'll be a sidewalk up front, but they will have, because there's a park on each end.
Right.
And they will have access to the walking trail that's in the, in the place that the commission.
So it circles around to that then?
If you trail on, I don't have a plan for me.
Here, I got one here for you.
So which side's the park on? Is it on Sweetburg side or Pinnacle side?
There's a park on.
Not park, parking.
Oh, there'll be parking in front of the houses.
So on Sweetburg?
Yes.
Not on.
Not Sweetburg.
The driveway will run to Sweetburg.
The driveways will run to Sweetburg.
But you'll have twenty-six feet between, by the end of Sweetburg to the beginning of the house, just, it's our typical setback back, just like.
I got you.
Okay, is it just twenty-six feet, or is there also easement here too, or just a twenty-six feet?
It's twenty-six feet from, there's not technically a curb there.
So currently, we're talking about putting four twenty-six or twenty-four houses in there?
Twenty.
Twenty houses in there, every single one of those back right up into Sweetburg.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think that's a good idea, but that's just me. I can, I can see the reason for the.
Okay, right. Sir.
Okay. Oh, I'm, I'm good, I may have.
My opinion counts most to me.
Any other comments? All right, so planning and zoning, there's a proposed ordinance for HB twenty twenty-three dash twenty, that is approving the rezoning from R one to MU one for property located at two oh one south Benton Street. I entertain a motion?
I like that motion.
I second, Mr. Farnum and Mr. Hyatt.
I gotta read the ordinance.
Um, I'm doing it, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. First reading, an ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from an R one single family residential to an MU one mixed use for property located at two oh one south Benton Street in Waynesville, Missouri fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from an R one single family residential to an MU one mixed use for property located at two oh one south Benton Street in Waynesville, Missouri fixing an effective date.
Mr. Farnum?
I still make that motion.
Mr. Hyatt? Discussion?
My final question was, I, a mixed use, I think I understand this, pretty much, what's the, what can you not put there?
Commercial businesses. Right, I suppose.
Clarification.
Yeah, mixed use would remove any industrial zoning, agricultural zoning, commercial zoning. Those, those would be.
They could put any kind of retail or anything like that, you say?
No, no, that's, retail's commercial.
No other comments? All right, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Proposed ordinance HB twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one. I'll let you read.
An ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from an R one single family residential to R two multifamily residential for property located at eight oh two historic route sixty-six west in Waynesville, Missouri fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance changing zoning classification for certain real estate from an R one single family residential to R two multifamily residential for property located at eight oh two historic route sixty-six west in Waynesville, Missouri fixing an effective date.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Bill, I mean, Mr. Farnum? Mr. Conley? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
I abstained.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you, passes.
We have a proposed ordinance HB twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two.
Excuse me, mayor.
Oh, what's that?
Did we have enough votes for the ordinance to pass?
Four.
Requires majority of the council.
So, yeah, we need five now, motion five.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, that's right.
Now.
It's not a tie.
It's not a tie.
Yeah. Probably fails.
Yeah. I'm the one who's taking four for.
Eric, starting with.
Thank you.
HB twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two.
First reading, an ordinance revoking a conditional use permit granted to Heather Frabel of one oh six Lincoln Lane for the keeping of chickens fixing an effective date. The second reading, an ordinance revoking a conditional use permit granted to Heather Frabel of one oh six Lincoln Lane for the keeping of chickens fixing an effective date.
Motion. Mr. Conley?
I'll make a second.
Mr. Hyatt, discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have a proposed resolution zero six two three. Please read the resolution.
A resolution approving a preliminary plot of Pinnacle Park at the summit.
Well, open the floor for discussion.
What's different about this one than the last? I mean.
Different about this plot than the last plot of Pinnacle?
Yeah.
The last plot of Pinnacle, the road going to it, comes off Summit Pass, and it goes up into an R two development that is isolated. Okay, so it's isolated, it was, I don't think it's gated anymore, it has an exit to the back of the summit. The summit exits currently our summit pass, and I think they named the road Pinnacle? Is that what they named the road that goes out into Reporter and Sweetburg?
Yes.
And, and Pinnacle, that Rowden more than happily put in. These are different because all twenty of these houses will directly dump into Sweetburg Road. And I'm only gonna say this, I mean, I, I think it needs to be relooked, personally. That's just me, I've lived there, that's the Reporter five thousand currently. The guy that lives on the corner between there and Summit Pass, his clock people going past his house at seventy miles an hour. So if somebody's doing seventy miles an hour prior to this development, that means they may be hitting Summit Pass, we'll say fifty-five. This is my own personal opinion, my opinion counts most to me. Twenty to forty cars, depending on how many cars people have, backing out into Summit Pass there is a bad idea as far as I'm concerned. It's just me personally.
Would we be better drop the speed limit to twenty-five?
Speed limit there is already twenty-five.
People just drive as fast as they can. People just drive as fast as they want through there, don't they?
It's thirty-five right in front there.
Okay, so it's thirty-five. I'll go with the Bill Farnum statement four or five months ago, nobody ever slowed down for a speed limit sign. Man, I, I just think there's gonna be a huge amount of accidents, people backing up in there. So, it's just me personally, I'll vote for y'all.
Any other discussion?
No.
Uh, motion? No motion?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, so Mr. Connolly, motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Farnum, second. Roll call.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
No.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Okay, we'll pass. All right, stand up, proposed ordinance HB twenty, twenty-three dash twenty-three. Please read.
Did that pass?
No, it did not.
Are you a tiebreaker?
It's gotta be five.
Okay.
Yeah, let's read to you. First reading, an ordinance approving the final plat for Pinnacle Park at the summit fixing an effective date. Second reading, an ordinance approving the final plat for Pinnacle Park at the summit fixing an effective date.
Motion? Do we have a discussion?
Motion.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion that we table this until a preliminary plat can be approved.
I'd second that.
All right.
Councilman Farnum?
So this is a, this is a vote for the table until the preliminary is... So this one is irrelevant at this point.
Well, table it, although, yes.
Oh, yes, table it.
Yeah, dude. Motion's gonna... Madam Clerk?
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
All right, that passes to table the approval of the final plat. Oh, did he respond?
Yes, yes.
That is the table of the final plat for Pinnacle Park until the preliminary is approved. All right, standing committee reports. We have utility by Councilman Connolly.
Okay, the utility committee met on fifth June three-thirty, myself, Councilman Rice, Councilman Hills, city staff over there along with Mr. Pritchett going there for visiting. We approved the minutes. Mr. Doyle gave us an update on the subdivision improvement program and on the Whitmore Buckhorn sewer project. On that, Mr. Doyle said the city is tied into a lift station to the manhole, have to put in a pump and then a seed straw being completed after all these years. For, uh, perimeter, perimeter premiere, electric service building hospital has been upgraded. Mr. Doyle showed us pictures before and after. Department of Dates, Mr. Sheldon said the electric department had four power outlets, ten street lights, four trees, nine miscellaneous, put in fifty-five new services, upgraded one service and did one net meter, we want them back. Highlights, he put in continued work on routing stages two, work on the Vista and Mesa, get the service changed out at the perimeter primary, get off of the daily dig rights and the single-phase rip closure saved three power outlets. Natural gas, Mr. Doyle said his department had worked on installing road crossings on Sierra Circle and completed with the annual walking of the gas line to check the leaks. City entered into agreement with USBI to keep the O and M annual updating with latest federal regulations and they were keeping up with the dated work orders and dig rights. Water and sewer department, Mr. Beal said they had eight water leaks, repaired two water mains, five sewers were jetted, six yards were replaced and installed ten new services. They also hauled slugs, painted and ruined in the lift stations and wells. Under other business, Mr. Doyle said there was a fee for a close session. Went into close session at... Came out, oh, went in at three, three fifty-nine, came out at four fifty-four, no further business. We adjourned at four fifty-four. Next meeting is July third at three thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly, are there any questions for utility? If not, we'll move on to Mr. Rice with economic development and government affairs.
Yes, the economic. The economic development, government affairs committee meeting was on June fifth. In attendance were Councilman Bill Farnum, Councilman Cecil Davis and myself, the city staff, John Doyle and Mary Ann Jones, Doug Potts were there, the media had Darryl Mariner. We called the order, the meeting to order at five PM. We approved the minutes for the May first meeting. We discussed a business spotlight for June, which is A-plus Tire and Loop, which is under new ownership. We discussed the small business renovation demolition grant program. Doug Potts recommended improving business graphics application and a place for grace application for five thousand dollars each, that passed. We discussed the electric vehicle charging stations grant. Stayed the EV charging station grant is due June thirteenth and he has submitted the application requesting five hundred thousand dollars, the grant matches twenty percent, which would be one hundred thousand. We discussed the wall at Hills, which is the Vietnam Veteran Memorial replica wall. The application for that to come to Waynesville, Mr. Potts is very confident that we will get this spot this time, today will be selected either in June, July or August of twenty-twenty-four. The wall would be placed at Laughlin Park. The application was submitted on May thirtieth. The wall will require a hundred and fifty volunteers, which we think we can easily get a lot from Fort Leonardwood. We discussed a digital sign permit. Mr. Potts submitted for a permit and was not approved by MODA. He has submitted a letter to appeal against that decision. We also talked about the billboard renderings. On I-24 billboard rendering provided to the committee was provided to the committee. The first one to go up will be advertising Hogs and Frogs on September twenty-second. Once Hogs and Frogs is over, the new advertisement will run showing graphics about Waynesville, Missouri. We discussed special events, one's already passed, Kids' Park Day. We discussed Juneteenth celebration on June nineteenth. Cape Strait Cruisers roll into town on June twenty-third through the twenty-fifth. Old Settlers' Day is July twenty-seventh through the thirtieth. Hogs and Frogs again is September twenty-second through the twenty-fourth. We'll have Pumpkin Fest on October twenty-eighth. Having no further visits, the meeting was adjourned at five twenty-eight PM. The next scheduled meeting will be held on July third at five PM.
Any questions for Mr. Rice? Thank you, Mr. Rice, for that report. Oh, you do?
I said, thank you.
All right, we have Rosen Grounds with Mr. Farnum.
Rosen Grounds, now on June sixth at four PM. I was called to order, asked persistent comments. Mr. Joseph Mott of Rudolph Drive came looking for a poll of the previous month's meeting he had with us about the ponding of water on his property when it ran. Jason Chapman, the street department supervisor, stated he brought Mr. Mott's residence. The ground has always been very low and it's hard to get a ditch in there. Mr. Mott asked for it about a culvert. Chapman stated there used to be a culvert back before the road was paved and it never drained well. It's hard to get the elevation that is needed. After further discussion, I told Mr. Mott that something hopefully could get done and we'd go back and have another look at. He also talked about the street lights in his neighborhood and Mr. Doyle stated the existing coals belonged to La Cle Electric and La Cle Electric will be the ones to make the decision as to which one we could put a street light on, so that's in the works. Then we approved the minutes, Mr. Ribery made a motion, I seconded. Next item is one ninety-seven Sunset Street easement. We had a copy of the easement for us to look over and it's gonna be given to Joe and Amanda Woodside for their review. Following that, we talked about the Sweetburg Road drainage project. Mr. Doyle discussed upcoming projects on Sweetburg Road, one project is planned for extending an electric line from Route sixty-six to Summit. This will require several easements and once they are received, he would like to begin working as soon as possible. The other project is to put a culvert across Sweetburg to ditch on the other side to keep water from getting under the road base. This also will require easements and there's three driveways to connect. Mr. Chapman gave us an update about the street department, busy hauling off for Cape Street Routh and subdivision and Cox's subdivision plus the Whitmore Farm Sewer Project. He received a shipment of road signs that currently been working to change out old signs.
No, no, I figured out some, figured out some.
Next was brush hogging, which they have done some. Having no other visits, we adjourned at four twenty-nine, next meeting is July eleventh at four PM.
Thank you, Mr. Farnum, any questions for Rosen Browns?
No.
Okay, police committee, Mr. Connolly.
Okay, the police committee met emergency service, we did a meeting met on June first, myself, Councilman Hyatt, also present were Michelle Brown, Denal Breklove, Mary Ann Jones, Chief Cardo, John Doyle, and we had guests Mike Shepherd, Jordan Light, Joanne Bishop and the mayor. While with the media, called to order at three-thirty, Mrs. Bishop complained about a vicious German Shepherd dog in her neighborhood who apparently attacked other dogs and apparently not attacking people, which she was very concerned about that. Police have been involved on a, on a matter earlier and there is a record on the dog and Mrs. Bishop was advised to call the police if the dog is seen running loose again. We approved the minutes, had an update on the animal shelter. Mrs. Breklove gave us an update on the cove of the dogs. The owner has signed his rights over and the animal shelter can start adopting the dogs out once they are spayed and neutered. And she has a ticket book. You have to be aware of somebody with a brand-new ticket book. Fire department update, Chief Shepherd said if I haven't tested it started, once complete, he'll give us the list, final list of hydrants, Mr. Doyle. Chief updated the police department or provided the update for the police department. The K-9 is to be at Kids' Park Day for a short week degree. Mr. Doyle discussed the building on Historic sixty-six that was recently purchased and will be used as a temporary fire station. Pictures of the building were provided. He's working with the fire chief to gear up the stakes, add additional roads with him to make it into a fire station. The official takeover of the building is in August. We talked about the U1, E-nine-one dispatch, he provided a update regarding the letter that was received from nine-one-one in regards to updating our agreement and increasing cost. Mr. Doyle said the city has provided a response letter and is moving forward with option C to provide some dispatch. This is for non-emergency dispatch services. We've got a list of special events, Kids' Park Day, June Cape State Cruisers in June, Old Settlers' Day in July, Hogs and Frogs in September and Pumpkin Fest in October. No future business, next meeting July sixth at three-thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly, any questions for police committee?
I've got one. The animal shelter person that has the ticket book now, my question is, does she have the sorority direct tickets or does that take the police officer?
She can predict, the prosecutor will still have to sign off on it.
Okay, that's all I can tell.
All right, we'll move on to financing human resources, Mr. Davis.
Financing Human Resource Committee was called to order at five oh-one PM on June first. A court was established. Chairwoman Amanda Corn, myself and Councilwoman Trudy Hills was present. There was no citizens' comments. We established the use of a consent agenda for the financing Human Resource Committee so we could do normal routine measures by a single vote. We approved the minutes of May fourth and the approval of the bills for May twenty-twenty-three in the same vote. Cash flow account status and end-of-year budget review. We reviewed the city's cash flow reports, bank account status and year-to-date budget. The city has completed forty-one point six percent of the fiscal year with expenses at forty-nine percent and total revenues at forty-four percent. City bank accounts have a total of six million three hundred fifteen thousand five hundred seventy dollars and thirty-five cents in restricted reserves and usable monies. The Westgate Community Improvement District update, committee reviewed the CID sales tax collection summary. Mr. Doyle stated that McDonald's is slated for a massive renovation that will affect the twenty, that will affect the twenty-twenty-three totals while it's out of operation, but renovation has been pushed back to the fall. Arpa projects update, Mr. Doyle stated that the budgeted ARPA monies and the police department budget will be utilized to install a new server. Emergency server upgrades, Mr. Doyle stated that over Memorial Day weekend, the IT contractor attempted a routine maintenance that resulted in the city hall server crashing. The server has been restored, however, the equipment is outdated and likely to fail again. In addition, in addition to the purchase of the server from the police department using the ARPA funds, city hall also needs a server, the cost of two together is approximately twenty-four thousand dollars and can be accommodated in the budget between ARPA funds and the police department contingency departmental funds. Show me power refund, we'll make it short. Mr. Doyle stated that we pay an annual wheeling charge of a hundred fifty thousand OTR power as well as a monthly subscription, making it some five thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars per the agreement. If it's not extended, they will refund us and they issued us a refund for about thirty-five thousand dollars. That's outstanding. Certificate of Participation Series two thousand and one project fund draw two. Draw two to purchase the facility at eleven oh seven Historic Route sixty-six has been completed and the wire has been received. The original plan was to utilize top funds to build a public works facility to house the electric department. However, the opportunity to purchase the building located at eleven oh seven Historic Route sixty-six came available. After discussions within the finance committee, city staff were tasked with getting approval through our municipal board experts at Simon Nicholas. After legal review, the city was approved through our, to utilize top funds to make the purchase. City council approved the purchase in May twenty-twenty-three city council meeting. The purchase will be, will temporarily house a fire department and will be renovated to accommodate a fire department at this time. Long-term, this building is planned as a future Waynesville public work facility that will house our electrical department. The city was able to save more than a million dollars by making the purchase as opposed to building a new facility and buying the land that the facility went on. Dispatch, we reviewed the letter signed by Amanda Wilson that was sent to West Coast County nine-one-one, asking them to continue their services to the city until the end of the year. At that time, the city will begin alternative... At that time, the city will begin alternative police and utility dispatching services by January 2024. Again, this is non-emergency services and is only police, utilities, and public works. Employee personnel manual updates. Miss Brown said that there are major changes to include wording from Mirma to address recreational marijuana. This updated policy conforms to Mirma's model policy and is personalized the 50 unique benefits and complexities of the city. Councilwoman Dills suggested we provide a copy to all employees annually, requiring them to sign upon receipt of the updated manual each year. There is proposed ordinance amending the employee manual to add holidays. These are the holidays that weren't added before, for example, Juneteenth. It passed to go to council. Other business, city hall will be closed at 10:00 a.m. on June 16th for employee appreciation day. Everybody's invited to attend and then it will be closed Juneteenth and observation of Juneteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Are any questions for Financing Human Resource Committee? We'll get to the specifics over the proposed ordinance. Any other questions? No? All right, so we have a proposed ordinance HB 2023-17.
First reading, an ordinance amending the employee personnel manual to add employee holidays fix an ineffective date. An ordinance amending the employee personnel manual to add employee holidays fix an ineffective date.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Davis, second by Mr. Rice. Discussion?
I have one question. I've noticed employee appreciation day is also listed as Good Friday. I don't think it's Good Friday. Maybe a good Friday because everyone has to work, but it's not Good Friday. Actually, yes, strike it with two words.
That is looking into the upcoming years. So like next year, we were looking at hosting employee appreciation on Good Friday, so it was a set date. So you knew when it was. This year, obviously, is tomorrow. And typically, it's been about that time. It's been about, you know, middle of June on the Friday. But with the new holiday of Juneteenth being recognized by the city, we, with this ordinance, we will be next year electing to observe this on Good Friday and removing that possibility of having it where you're going to close city hall and then like this particular weekend, you're going to have a gap in service until Tuesday.
If we strike those two words, we don't have to renew the ordinance next year or the year after.
What do you mean?
We won't have to renew the ordinance anyway because it will be on Good Friday.
Next year, following year, it won't be.
Yeah, well, every year it's going to be on Good Friday.
You pass new ordinance every year.
The date isn't there of Good Friday. It's just the day of Good Friday.
Yeah, I couldn't put what the date is.
I mean, we can put the date in there.
Well, Good Friday varies. It's in March some years, it's in April some years. Depending upon.
Think the bottom line, you just tried to identify it on a Friday, like, you know.
An identifiable Friday, yes.
And Good Friday is an identifiable Friday.
I don't know. I don't know. I express my opinion.
Yeah.
That's what we're supposed to do, I saw it.
Yes, absolutely.
I don't have no problem with that. All right, so with that being said, Madam Clerk, please dial a roll.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Waynesville-St. Robert Joint Airport Board will be approved by Mr. Doyle.
The Waynesville-St. Robert Joint Airport Board meeting was held May 23rd at 3:00. Chairman George Lorson, Vice Chair John Doyle, Nita Ivy, Clarence Liberty, Bill Taylor were in attendance, staff Miriam Jones and Mike Guy. Guests included Alan Mole, Renee Wazreening, Brian Lorden, Bob Crane, Carola Putt, Krista Parker, Robert Osborne, Jerry Thomas, and Matt Chaffetz, and media was Darrell Marina. Chairman Lorson called the meeting to order at 3:00. Approval of the minutes. Motion, and a second was made with the motion passing. Reports by staff, budget. Revenues were shown to be at 30% with expenses at 25%. Airport operations manager Mike Guy stated that fuel cells were on track for that month. Contour Airlines reported had been a good month with a total of 2,000 passengers for the month, and May is already trending ahead of April. There were appears to be more civilians utilizing the flight service at Fort Leonardwood with flights to Nashville and Dallas. Engineering updates from Burns &amp; McDonald, the NEPA reevaluation and EBS, or environmental baseline survey. Bob Crane stated that the NEPA and EBS were sent to DPW. Krista Parker stated that the lease package was reviewed by legal and hopefully by the end of the week could be sent for MCOM for their review, which could take more than six months. General design draft scope, Brian Lorden stated that the scope of work was sent out for review to the cities of Waynesville and St. Robert, MoDOT, FAA, Fort Leonardwood. There will be a lot more involvement from FAA with the project and we have been assigned a project manager named Justin Collier. The IFE or independent fee estimate scheduling purpose, this is still in discussion on fees for design and FAA is requesting an IFE be performed on the project. And the airport terminal project follow-up meeting will be held June 8th at 1:00 at Waynesville City Hall. SOP marketing was given by Miriam Jones as Aaron Yonkin was unavailable to attend. The report consisted of Twitter engagements and impressions were up over the last month because of the time that was spent. Each tweet tagging tourism profiles and Missouri attractions. We are currently seeking images for Instagram, looking for four or five pictures from the airport each month that would, that's going to help getting more traffic on Twitter and Instagram. People want to see the airport, want to know what it's like, what it looks like. The Google ads were also up and they were running very successful for this month. They're going to continue to monitor the most successful keyword phrases and work to optimize our ad score so that we can reach as many potential passengers as possible. With no further business, Chairman Lorson adjourned the meeting at 3:21 with the next meeting scheduled Tuesday, June 27th at 3:00 P.M. at Waynesville City Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Any questions regarding the airport board? I'll leave it in your hands, Mr. Doyle, for your city administrators.
Supplied council with the administrators' report this month. We're kind of going to focus on a few grant updates, talk about the TAP grant, sidewalk grant. This is a grant giving the opportunity to provide the city with additional sidewalks and walking trails, creating connectivity between existing sidewalks. The grant, TAP grant approval was in August of 2022. As of May, surveying for the project has been complete through the end of May through June. We expect the design phase to be somewhat complete, hopefully 65% or more. We're looking to hopefully bid in August of this year estimated and construction phase possibly by as early as September, but for sure by this fall is our hope. Defense Community Infrastructure Pilot Program, the DCIP grant. This grant opportunity for DCIP funding is to construct a new fire station in Waynesville. The grant due date is June 23rd. Our expected submittal date for this grant is June 21st with grant selection somewhere in September. I know I reviewed that grant a couple times and I believe we may be ahead of schedule for submittal, but it is going around to the other partners for review, comment, and edits. CFI program, charging and fueling infrastructure discretionary grant program. This grant opportunity provides alternative fuel corridors and EV charging stations along selected corridors. Original grant due date is, was May 30th. They revised that due date to June 13th. We submitted our grant for this on June 12th, meeting that due date. Should have notification, hopefully July. It is a very highly competitive grant field and selection date of October of '23. Our Tourism Asset Development Grant, this is a grant opportunity to remove or renovate existing structures along tourism routes. We submitted this in late fourth quarter of '22. We received notification, the city was not accepted or its application was denied for that grant. Moving off of the grants to discuss some of the projects that we've been working on in the past month. Whitmore Farms, the gravity system, lift station, force mains been installed, complete. Pump testing was completed on June 13th. This test resulted in the discovery of a faulty pump. The pump was taken back by the manufacturer and reinstalled yesterday or today, and it is up and running. We've done our pump test, so that is a good pinnacle at the summit. All the utility road crossings have been installed. Items left to finalize the subdivision work on the pinnacle at the summit include road grading, curbing, and paving. Utilities have been installed, complete. Summit Pass, items to finalize the subdivision work at Summit Pass include the installation of natural gas main, water main, and electric main. Sewer main is installed, complete. Road grading, curbing, paving, and the installation of the final pump, lift station, and control panel. Employee Appreciation Day, the city will be celebrating Employee Appreciation Day on June 16th, which is tomorrow, not Good Friday. I would like to invite all of you to attend. It's an open invite to the city council members. Start time will be at 11:00 and come down and enjoy with us if you can and hit some upcoming events. Again, Employee Appreciation Day is June 16th, Juneteenth. Celebration is June 19th with city hall being closed. We have Cave State Cruisers in town, June 22nd through the 25th. Fourth of July with city hall being closed and are planning for Old Settlers Day, July 27th through 30th. Come join us at those activities.
All right, thank you, Mr. Doyle. Any questions for city administrator? All right, we'll have our councilman comment and we'll start with Mr. Farnum tonight and we'll go away the rolls.
Well, you mentioned that tomorrow is Employee Appreciation Day for the city members and the city council to come have whatever the top of it.
Yeah.
What if I wanted to go over to the funeral home and every women's thing, I could fish in over there.
Yes, you can.
Or you can eat then. Stop by both places.
I could do more with that. Everybody have an enjoyable time and citizens at home, come out.
Trust me, you're going to want to be at this one.
All right. Hey.
I just want y'all to know that I appreciate employees every day. I won't be here tomorrow, the government forces me to work. On a side note, there's a whole lot of easy decisions to make as a city councilman, there's a whole lot of hard decisions to make. The decision that for the plat, I hate to put development behind. I know that it costs money, but in good conscience, I can't put cars back in and out on the sweepper. An easy decision to make, though, was a fire station. To save the city $1.5 million, everybody knows what building materials cost, they know what land costs, they know what everything else costs. That was an easy decision. I'll leave it on this point just for Michelle. Be careful of complainers, they have a problem for every solution. So when you see that stuff on Facebook, that's what it is.
I can't compete with that.
I know. I even turned my mic on this time.
I'd just like to welcome the new park board appointments and funding and zoning Timothy Riviera and I'm the park board, Erica Haley and Andrew Everling. Welcome, welcome aboard, glad to have you. It's nice to have younger people coming into the boards and commissions that kind of drop out. He was on over here.
He's had five of them.
I want to wish my dad Happy Father's Day. We have a big dinner planned and all the family's getting together. So if you have a father out there, talk to him, see him, do whatever you can because they don't last forever.
So Sunday is at the Rice House?
That's it.
Every time.
Well, tomorrow is Employee Appreciation Day, even though it's not Good Friday. And unfortunately, I won't be there. I'd be one of the few that I have missed. I can remember far back in the distance. It started out as a fish fry held by a group of the electric department in the electric. They'd open the doors, people would stop by and have fresh fish. And it's grown into much bigger, much more inclusive. And I would like to say that I, the work ethic, the dedication to the city of our city workers is second to none. And while I won't be at the appreciation day, I do certainly appreciate and so should citizens of this city appreciate our, the work they do. I'll end it there.
All right, thank you. I just got just a couple of things I want to say and Happy Father's Day to all the fathers that's up here. But I want to talk about one thing about the city. Our desire is not to have to abate any properties. That's not what we live to want to do because it creates more work for ourselves. With that being said, I want everybody to kind of understand something. We get a lot of calls that are referring to another person's yard as far as the grass is too high, what have you. Right now, the way that the city kind of, the way that the city approaches that issue, right now, we have over 45 homes within our city that we have to go and cut. And that takes our workers away to go and cut these properties. That means our parks because we have individual homes that are not being maintained. And the reason why we do it that way is because if we can't, we can't create another expense to go cut someone else's property because now it becomes another expense for the city, at the same time, it's supposed to be the individual's responsibility. So I want you to keep in mind when we're trying to keep up with the abatements and you see sometimes our workers are not doing what they're supposed to do is because they're doing what they're supposed to do. They're doing what they're told to do to help keep our community clean. But we need the participation of all of the landowners, those that own houses and properties to maintain your property so we can continue to do the things that we need to do as city workers and employees in our community keeping things clean. And that's the only thing I'm asking is just to assist us in maintaining our community. It takes a community to get this done. With that said, I'm going to leave it at that tonight. And I'll be at the employee appreciation tomorrow and I do appreciate all of the work that employees do and all of our volunteers that commit to this service to the community. Just like Mr. Davis said, it's tough decisions that have to be made. There's easy decisions, but we're here, we're always the targets because, you know, we don't know what we're doing. So we accept that fact, but we're standing here because we care about this community. We live here too. We pay the same taxes, we drive the same roads, we want everything that you want. So we appreciate the feedback, but also understand we really care about what we're doing. And we're doing it, most of us are doing it here for free. So with that said, this meeting is adjourned.